And we are live, Mr. Chair.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northborough Board of Selectmen Meeting of June 13th, 2022. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the June 16th, 2021 Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I'd now like to make sure that everyone can hear us and be heard. I'll call the members first. Julianne Hershey, there?
Yes, I'm here.
Scott Rogers?
Present.
Kristen Wixted?
Hello, here.
Jason Perro?
Present.
And I'm Mitch Cohen. I am here, and I assume you can hear me since you've confirmed that. You can. Staff, we have John Kader with us.
Present.
Beckamikens?
Present.
Chief Parenti?
Present.
And Bill Laver?
Present.
And we also have Northborough Cable on assisting with the recording for this evening, and let's get started. We've got a couple of meeting minutes to attend to. First one is April 25th, 2022. Would anyone like to make a motion or present any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Sure?
I move to approve the April 25, 2022 meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jason. I think I heard Julianne first. Let's see, let's riff through roll call vote, of course. Jason, first of all, any discussion before we vote? I'm sorry. No, Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And I'm Mitch Cohen abstaining because I was not yet a member of the board. May 23rd, 2022 would like someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair? Yes, I move to approve the May 23rd, 2022 meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
That one I'll give to Scott. Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Let's see, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Mitch Cohen, vote aye unanimously approved on both counts. Public comment, so followers of this meeting may notice that public comment is now at the top of the agenda and will repeat below. For this meeting, this is exactly the same type of public comment that we've always had. So that if anyone in the public has anything that they would like to share with us, now is a good time, or you can wait until the end of the meeting if you so desire, whether it be something that's on our agenda or otherwise. I see one hand raised. And Lisa Muselli, I'm bringing you in. Please identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Chairman Cohen for the opportunity to make public comments before and after the body of the agenda. It's going to be, I hope more people get involved and participate. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get the packet as of 5:45 tonight. I don't know if it's up now, but I would have liked to have read it before I had some questions, but these I have three questions tonight that I would like at some point, at some sort of discussion on. One, certain RFQs are under the purview of the selectmen, I assume. Do they view, edit, and approve these RFQs before they get posted? The second question is, do the selectmen see the monthly reports such as progress, complaint, and resolution from the department heads? I know I have sent in a few complaints to the zoning enforcement officer and some work has been done, but I've never heard back on any of those complaints from him of their resolution or status. And third, I would like to request a revisit and a rescinding of the department reporting policy set up on July 18th, 2016, whereby the administrator evaluates the fire and police chief. I believe they are they are eagle on the org chart. And the policy goes against the charter. This was confirmed by Jeff Amberson when he was selectman, saying that he believed the policy was policy had circumvented the town charter and felt that the proper place for this discussion would have been before town meeting. So I would like to have that revisited, and that'll be my comments for tonight, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Lisa. I don't know the answers to any of those questions off the top of my head, but we will research them, and if at all possible, get back to you before our next meeting. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to offer comment at this time? Going once, going twice. Okay, public comment at the top of the agenda is closed for now. Next on our agenda being after 7:05, Chief Laver. You've got some busy stuff for us this evening. I'm excited.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't see it on the agenda, but I also submitted a request for the reappointment of special police officers. That's an annual event.
It is on there underneath new business, but we can-
I just saw my name and looked there, so okay, very good, thank you.
Why don't we do your your general appointments first and then and then we can do that one?
Thank you. First on the list here is promotion to Sergeant of Patrolman Thomas McDonald. This vacancy was created as a result of a sergeant that left the department to pursue different pastures here in law enforcement. He was, we ended up having a promotional process back in 2021. There were three offices that passed moving forward to the Assessment Center, which was conducted by an outside consulting firm that specializes in doing police promotional and testing and consulting center. So they prepared a 100-question multiple-choice test, which was 50% of the grade, and the Assessment Center was conducted by three, actually, I think it was four out of the area chiefs that none of the candidates knew. And they did the Assessment Center going, putting the candidates through certain exercises. They scored the candidates based on their responses to questions and instructions based on the Assessment Center. And then that became overall part of their their score. And then there's the chief's assessment, and in this case, all three of the candidates, in my opinion, were equally qualified. And I chose to go strictly with the combined test scores. And we have, we've had two promotions off of that list, and we have one candidate still remaining on that list, and that's Thomas McDonald. Tom's been with the department for 14 years, a Northborough resident, three kids that go through the school system. He is a primary field training officer for our new employees. He knows our policies and procedures very well. As he trains most of the new people that come in once they graduate from the academy, or if they're fully trained and they come in, he gives them their indoctrination to the police department, and again, our policies, procedures, the way we do things here. He does that very well, and coaching and teaching are one of the primary responsibilities of sergeant, as they're the first-line supervisor. So therefore, I would ask that the board promote Thomas McDonald to the rank of sergeant.
I have Tom McDonald in the attendees. Would you like me to bring him in and we can congratulate and or embarrass him in person? Okay, promoting to panelists. Tom, here you go on your way in. Very good. Welcome to our meeting.
How you doing?
Excellent. Chief Laver, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I just noticed that on the effective date of the promotion, originally I had asked for it to be August 4th. I would actually request that that be amended to start on the 14th. He's conducting, he's doing the job now as an acting sergeant, and there's no point delaying that.
Sounds good. Any board members have any questions or comments before I ask for vote? Julianne?
I just want to thank the whole family for coming tonight to see your Officer McDonald get his appointment. Thanks, kids. Nice to see you.
I might add that Tom's wife is, I believe, the supervisor. I may have the title wrong with the City of Waltham and their dispatch center for public safety.
Excellent.
Not a supervisor yet.
Jason? Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Tom, just want to add my congratulations. Thank you for your service to the town to date and look forward to further contribution in the role of sergeant. Terrific to see the family here tonight, and we congratulate all of you on this promotion.
Thank you very much.
Board members, any other questions? Tom, did you have anything else you wanted to add before we vote?
No, just that it's that's an honor. It's a goal of mine that I had for about 15 years when I started in dispatch, so looking forward to making it official and getting started.
Very good. Thank you very, very much. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move the board vote to appoint Thomas McDonald as Police Sergeant effective June 14th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jason, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion?
Wasn't it August 14th?
Chief Laver, could you confirm the date that you're requesting?
The memo says the 14th. That was, I had submitted a different memo and it was, it needed some editing, so it was it was sent back, and at that point in time I had changed it to the tomorrow's date.
Okay.
I'm asking you to start it effective tomorrow.
Okay, got it.
That is consistent with the motion. Okay, any other questions or comments? Jason, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, and thank you very much to you and your whole family.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I'm still learning the Zoom thing here. And Chief Laver, up next?
Well, we should have Joshua Ferreira online, but I found him somewhere in the world of Zoom.
I do see him. Let me bring him in now?
Yes, please.
Okay, Josh, you're coming in.
All right, Mr. Chair. Joshua is currently a dispatcher with the Douglas Police Department. He is a lifelong resident of City Worcester, graduate of, oh, no, God, I wish, St. John's High School in Shrewsbury. And then he went on to Anna Maria College where he graduated the degree in sociology and criminology. He has worked in Douglas basically in a part-time capacity because he recently just graduated from school with his degree. So I spoke with Chief Migliolino over there who I know very well, and he had nothing but praise to Joshua. As a matter of fact, we're basically stealing him from underneath them because he was hoping to hire him. But we beat him to the punch because they don't have an opening and we do, and Joshua has assured me that he isn't going nowhere. So he also worked at Wegmans when he was in school, so he's got some affiliation in Northborough, and I believe, if I'm correct, Jared Groff is from Northborough as well. Yes, so he's got some connections here, so we'd hope to see him here for a long time. So I would therefore ask you to appoint Joshua for effective on July 5th. He starts the academy in Boylston on July 25th, and that'll give us basically a few weeks just to get him equipped, set up, get all his uniforms in, get him fit up for his body armor, and get him ready to send him off to the academy on July 25th.
Very good. Members of the board, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Scott.
Yeah, Josh, just want to say thank you for choosing Northborough. Great to have you join us here and hope to a long career serving the town. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me.
Josh, I'll add that I was a member of the Board of Selectmen in Douglas many years ago, so I'm happy to to steal somebody else and upgrade to Northborough. Josh, is there anything you'd like to add before we vote?
Yeah, as Chief Laver said, my fiance is a lifelong resident of Northborough. She just actually barely moved to Charlton, so I spent a lot of the time in Northborough, and even though I'm not from there, it was kind of a second home to me for a long time. And I spent spent a lot of time there. I was like, like I said, had a lot of good memories, a lot of fun times. So I'm honored that Chief Laver and the department and the town has given me this opportunity to serve such a great community who's given me and someone so important to me such a great time in their lives.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to appoint Joshua Ferreira as Police Officer effectively July 5th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Kristen. Any other comments before we vote? Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone, for having me. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, next we have Jacob Tundell. He should be in the queue as well.
Yes, here we are. Jacob, you're coming in. Chief, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jacob is a resident of Webster, Massachusetts. He's currently working as a security officer at UMass Memorial at Harrington Hospital in Southbridge. He graduated from high school in Webster, and he has obtained his bachelor's degree of arts in criminology from Assumption University as well. Again, he's enrolled in two academies, and we were told that the Boylston Academy, which is actually so convenient for us being in Boylston, there's a possibility that where he's on the waitlist that he will get a seat in that academy, which will be run, will be attended by our previous appointee, Mr. Ferreira. So that would be nice, to go to the same academy together, train together, and they're they're much more local, saves me on transportation costs and things of that nature. So other than that, he has been secured a seat in the Randolph Academy. And I'm looking at the wrong line here. Just make sure it's Randolph. Yeah, and again, that's that's scheduled to start in the first week of September. So I'm asking that he'd be appointed on July 25th. That's the day the academy in Boylston starts, and normally we know if someone's going to that academy the week before. If they're on a waitlist and they get notified, because there are people that have gone to the fitness assessment that may not have passed it at the academy that will, they're given a two-week or a period of time to come back for a retake. And if they don't fill that, they're dropped from the class. They cannot attend. So that creates vacancies and usually during the orientation, sometimes people might hear what the academy is all about and what it's like and decide that that may not be for them. So it's a it's an iffy prospect, but if that works out, that'd be great for us. If not, we will have him here up until the first week of September. And that's really not a bad thing for us because that'll shave quite a bit of time off of his field training time when he does come back from the academy, because a lot of that is administrative, a lot of that is learning the streets in Northborough. So he will be able to go out and ride with the officers, observe. He will not be in a uniform, won't be carrying a gun. He'll just basically be an observer. But he gets to learn the streets. He gets to learn our policies and procedures, observe how we do things, spend time with dispatch. They'll go over the, all of our FTO officers go over to the fire department and spend time there to learn how the fire department operates. Where all the equipment is in the ambulance, because we partner with them on almost every ambulance call, and they'll say we need this. So it's not a bad thing that he'll be on the payroll ahead of time because it has a benefit on the end portion of that. So we'll get our dollars' worth out of him before he goes to the academy, and that that'll work as well. So I will let the board know obviously as to whether or not he, but we were successfully getting him into Boylston because Randolph's a bit of a ride, and again, we save us a lot of money on costs of transportation. So that's why I would be asking for that, that he be appointed on the 25th.
July 25th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments? Jason?
Welcome, Jacob. Appreciate you choosing Northborough. Always happy to see new recruits like yourself coming in with a lot of enthusiasm, certainly the academic support and already skewed up for the academy training. So looking forward to having you onboard and wishing you the best while you're here.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Jacob, anything you'd like to add before we vote?
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I've honestly been looking forward to work here for a very long time. My mother's the office manager at the Westport District Court, so sometimes I make my way through this area. And when I first interviewed, I was telling Chief Laver how interested I am in working in one of the boroughs, and I think I got very lucky with this one, and I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm honored that I was chosen for the position.
Thank you very much. Board, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Jacob Tundell as Police Officer effective July 25th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion or comments? Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kristen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Mitch Cohen, I vote aye. The vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations. Welcome to Northborough.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this again. This is awesome. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Welcome to board.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, you had also reappointment of special officers, which on our agenda would come after reports, but let's go ahead and let's take that now while you're here invisible.
Okay, it's annual request. Special officers are appointed for a year at a time. They'll, the appointments will be effective again July 1st. The first person would be retired Sergeant James Bruce. He's been actively participating as a special officer doing details of traffic control since he retired. Jim's fully trained. He was a full-time officer, academy-trained. He's maintained all of his training that's required moving forward with the post commission as far as certification of officers. That's not an issue. Even part-time offices have to have the same level of training as full-time offices if they're going to be working, even if it's just working traffic details. Erica Abrow, again, she's a trained to the reserve intermittent level, and she has maintained all of her necessary training under the post commission, so she's eligible to work as well. The only reason that she can continue to work is that under the new post standards, she must attend a bridge academy, and what they have done is they've added numerous part-time academies for people that have been functioning as reserve intermittents. They have got, they had to attend originally an academy that was considerably less amount of time, but it covered the meat and potatoes of police work so that they could work part-time in like smaller agencies. So moving forward, all of those people with that training level of reserve intermittent have to obtain the same basic minimum number of hours as a full-time police officer. She is enrolled in a bridge academy, and she will have, there's a specific date that the post commission has assigned for her group that she's in with to complete that, and I'm sure she will. She's got an extensive amount of training that she takes on her own anyway through the, well, the municipal police training commission, but council, the, but post now oversees that. So it's a major change in the way we're doing business. It's just a lot of work, but I'm sure, I'm very confident she'll make that, but in any event, she has a year to do that. She's a big help to us when we're, we can't fill details, especially now that we're short. Special offices are really something in need, so then we only have two, so that that would be effective July 1.
Okay, very good. Members of the board, any questions or comments? Technical question in the list of motions. It read for a one-year period through June 30th, 2022. I assume that motion should be through June 30th, 2023, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, very good. There are no other comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint James Bruce and Erica Abrow as special police officers for a one-year period through June 30th, 2022.
2023, perhaps?
2023. It says 2022 on the thing. I would just read the thing, but yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other questions or comments from the board? Kristen, how do you vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Jason, question?
I just, yeah, just a quick mention, just to say thank you to Jim and Erica for serving this capacity and providing kind of the surge capacity that the chief needs in certain circumstances when manpower is not available.
Thank you. Kristen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations to our special officers, and congratulations, and thank you, Chief Laver.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on to our reports. Julianne, do you have any reports?
Um, yes, I have a few things. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would really like to start off with a comment about the Memorial Day program. It was, it was a really specially wonderful tribute to those who have given their lives in service to our country. And I also want to thank all those who helped organize the event. It was, it was beautifully done. And I just want, I know this comment was made, but it can't be made often enough. I don't think that we, we have to acknowledge every day that our ability to enjoy the freedoms of a democratic form of government comes at a cost, and that's a cost that we were honoring that day. So thank you to those servicemen and women who have given their lives and to their Gold Star families. And then I will move on to White Cliffs, which people may have seen an article in the Community Advocate about. We had a discussion about the chimney, which is obviously having some issues and in dire need of repair. The committee agreed on recommendation from town staff that the failing part of the chimney be dismantled. The bricks will be stored on the property, and this is, it's dismantled for safety reasons. So hopefully, now that we're out of COVID, the committee will be moving forward with more preservation projects and potential use. And then MPIC met on June 9th, and the request for proposal for for the downtown plan as well is almost, almost published. There will be three visioning exercises with the public and ultimately the development of the concept plan. So I just mentioned this because I hope that, that people will participate in this and I will be, be updating as, as the weeks go on. And then very exciting, this weekend, Saturday, June 18th, the cultural council is having their culture fest. That will be from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. I, that committee works so hard, there's only about six of the core members. I'm sure that they'll be getting more volunteers that day. But if you had a chance to attend any of their festivals in the past, it's, you know that you're in for a good, a good time. So this is also your last chance to see the doors that were painted by local artists and to bid on them if you so wish to. So please stop by, have some local food, see what your local artists are doing and enjoy some music and performances. And I'm sorry, I still have a couple more things. On Tuesday, the Sustainable Northborough Group is having an informational presentation about how one person in town, Rick Hagan, made his home carbon neutral. This will be June 14th at the library from 7:00 to 8:30. This group has a ton of information, so whether you're ready or just thinking about how to make your house more energy efficient, this would be a really great presentation. And just want to remind folks that on Thursday, June 16th, we will be hopefully hearing from a lot of you about your suggestions for how to use over $4 million. And you can participate in person or remotely or on the dedicated email site. So thanks everyone, that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Kristen, you have any reports?
Hi, yeah, thank you. So we got an invitation in our email to attend some webinars that are run by the CMRPC and they're all focused about the environment and sustainability. So I signed up for all of them because they're Wednesdays at lunchtime and that worked for my schedule really well. The first one was about microgrids, which I had no idea what they are and it was really interesting. The second one was about town volunteer committees regarding sustainability and environmental action. In particular, the chairs from the Westboro and the Princeton committees presented and shared a lot of good ideas. That was interesting. So if anyone's interested in that and they're not already attending those, I'd be happy to talk to them about it. The Community Affairs Committee is working on their summer concert series and I have the poster all ready to go. Sunday, June 26th, they're having Cold Spring Harbor. Thursday, July 14th, they're having Stomp and Holler. Sunday, July 24th, Cold Chocolate, and then there's two in August that I'm not even going to talk about yet. August 11th and then August 21st, there's, but they're, they're going to have food and fun things for kids. And if you've never been to the summer concert series in Northborough, you're missing something pretty great. So thanks to them. Thanks to everybody who's been applying for boards and committees. That's great. Speaking of cultural council, there's five spots open on that. So hopefully they will get volunteers this weekend, but if anyone's thinking about that, that does seem like a very fun group with a lot of interesting projects that they work on. And my poem today is from Emily Wu, who is a graduate of Algonquin Regional High School. And it's called Ode to My Errors. To all my errors, whether you are a stumble, slip up, or even a crash, I thank you. I say thank you because you have taught me how to grow like a seed in my grandmother's garden, springing quickly towards the sky. You have made me strong, a lion in the middle of the city. That's an excerpt from that poem, but I won't finish it, maybe a little too long for a BOS report. And then one other thing that I just thought of while I was sitting here was something maybe I could talk about after, but I was wondering what the procedure was for the application for boards and committees. It's hard for people, or it's hard for Diane, or there's two different applications out there and sometimes they fill out the wrong one and then Diane has to wait for them to fill out the right one. And, and also would we have some say on what's on that application and be able to maybe revise it a little bit? Because I feel like some of the questions might be a little out of date too. I think it's always a good idea to revisit that kind of application, so just an idea.
Sure. In the answer to that last question, yes, it would be up to this board to, to determine what the application process is, policy, including the form, so we can revisit that.
Thanks.
Okay, and I've heard similar comments about the, the dueling forms. I did discuss it briefly with Di and it seemed to be a challenging thing to modify, but we'll, we'll take another look.
Thank you.
Jason, reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to echo the sentiments about the Memorial Day celebration or observance, I should say. Just appreciate all of the efforts that went into making that happen. It's been after two years of doing a remote observance, this is the first time we've been able to gather and actually walk the route, stop at each of the memorials and make the proper recognition. So I'd like to thank the Borough's cares for troops group, who do a lot of the organizing, particularly Karen Brewster, Post 234 for their representation and guidance throughout the route procession. And I also want to thank Public Works Department for, for their work at each of the sites to make it, you know, appropriate for the occasion. And then finally to our selectmen, Scott Rogers, who spoke on behalf of the board and did so very eloquently, being able to call upon his own experience as, as a military veteran, dovetail that with the recognition of those who lost their lives in the service of our country. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jason. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me pivot from the Memorial Day observance. Yes, it was an honor to be able to speak both with folks during, during the observances and then a chance to talk at length with a few gentlemen back at the post. And that was a highlight of my day. Both, both in the formal observance, but the informal activities that happened afterwards. A couple items that came from the chief reports that of note, Chief Parenti, if I can pass you the baton for just a moment. In your report and the, some recent incidents due to lack of or non-functioning fire and carbon dioxide detectors, can you speak just a little bit to that and provide some guidance for residents?
Sure, thank you very much. But we often respond to incidences where we find either outdated smoke detectors or smoke detectors with no batteries in them. Oftentimes it's at seniors' houses and we do have a program called Senior Safe, where we will come out to your house and we will do a quick eval for safety. And if we have, if you need your batteries replaced, we'll replace your batteries. We can put a couple of smoke detectors in place if you don't have any. It is not a program, we had a call yesterday that someone wanted us to come out and replace all their smoke detectors so they could sell their house. That's not the intent of it, it's not a, so we can, in lieu of, it's to make sure you have some safety. But what, what Scott brings up is in regards to a specific incident, is we had it, we had a fire that started exterior to a building. The smoke came into the house, resident was in the house, but in a different part of the house. Never knew that the exterior of his house was on fire because he had no detectors in his house. And he didn't know until we got there and we only got the call because someone drove by and saw. So when we got there and knocked on the door, he's like, what are you doing here? Well, your house is on fire. So it's incredibly important to have not just smoke detectors, but the proper smoke detectors for the age of your house. Interconnected, hardwired with battery backup, backup portable. If one goes off, they all go off. If you're in another part of the house, you'll know that there's something going on, the smoke detector on the other half of the house. One of the things a fire service has been trying to do for years is work ourselves out of a job by putting in new codes and new detectors and all that. And smoke detectors do save lives, there's no question, it's been proven. So I can't stress enough the importance. Thank you very much for asking the question.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. And Chief Lever, if I, thanks for indulging me. Another item that came up with the chief, this was from a resident's question on gun safety. And Chief, could you talk a little bit about the cable locks and the gun safety program that we're a part of?
Certainly. Of course, with everything going on around the country with school shootings and mass shootings we're just about to kick off, a suggestion from a resident that came through Scott. They were asked if we participated with Project Child Safe and we have over the years. And they provide us with cable locks for guns that meet certain specifications in, in most of the states. We've had them here for years, there's a box of them out on the counter. And then as a result of the conversation that we had, I thought it would be a good idea during the Be Well Northborough Day that we address gun safety. And I, we reached out to the organization, Project Child Safe. Because actually it was noted, noted that we're not listed if you want to say, it's a question that says find a cable lock and gun kit, a cable kit. You can click on it, you can put in your town or zip code and we were not listed. So I reached back out to them and I asked why we weren't, it took several emails. But I also requested that they resupply us with locks. So we actually had three cases of cable locks come in today and several hundred pamphlets. So we will be participating on June 22nd at Ellsworth McAfee Park for the Be Well Northborough adventure. We'll have some posters up, table with, with the cable locks and the, the safety pamphlets. It's responsible gun ownership in the home, that's the focus of the program. And you know, obviously most, most legal licensed gun owners are very careful about their locks, but the penalties in Massachusetts are very extensive for having an unsecured weapon in the home. Matter of fact, like if a child gets a hold of one and accidentally injures someone or themselves, the penalties are extreme. I mean, you're looking at felony time, prison, state prison and fines in excess of $25,000. And just the fact of a minor being able to get a hold of a gun has some extreme fines as well. So Massachusetts is very strict on, on properly securing firearms. And this is just, we're going to help people do that. And so that's, that's where we stand with that. So everything is necessary and we will on our social media within, hopefully, I wanted to start last week, but it's been busy. We'll, we'll start a public awareness campaign on Facebook and we'll get the link up on our website so that we can let people know we'll be down there on the 22nd. Hope that answers your question, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. So pivot right into, I hope everybody that can join us on the 22nd down in Ellsworth McAfee Park for the kind of the summer kickoff of Be Well Northborough initiatives. Like the chief said, a lot of groups will have information and it'll just be a lot of, lot of fun down there. So thanks to Rec Department and other supporting, set that up. Next, congratulations to our Health Director and supporting staff for the vaccination clinic that occurred at the senior center on the 9th. I think nearly 300 folks got vaccinated or boosted, helping increase the health and wellness of the community. So appreciate that work. Looking forward to the ARPA input on Thursday as Julianne mentioned at the Algonquin Library or remotely. You'll see information for that on Town News. Then finally, I guess the, you know, a series of monitoring the discussions that if, around the White Cliff chimney as that went through the initial report, Historic District Commission, Community Preservation Committee, and then seeing the work completed and disassembling and capping as I drove by yesterday. Also monitoring discussions on the reports of truck traffic and parking violations. And as the chief has reminded folks, you can report those parking violations to the Northborough Police Department. We've had some discussions about professional development days when we have town elections so that we have a little bit safer situation in our schools as voters are coming in to vote. We've had some discussions around interview process for our diversity, inclusion, equity and belonging committee as well as getting a lot of, getting quite a few email public input on, on ARPA. So quite a few conversations and topics are happening as folks provide their input to us on those. That ends my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. As always, a benefit of going last, as many of the items have already been covered, but I will again echo Scott. Thank you very much for your excellent speech at the Memorial Day event. It was very, very well said and you're an excellent representative of the board, so thank you very much for that. And I'll also echo what's been said previously about that day in far as everyone who was involved to put it together and the DPW for making the cemetery and all of the memorials absolutely beautiful for the day. Speaking of beautiful, the Assabet Park reopened since our last meeting and it is absolutely magnificent. And every time I go by it, it is packed with little kids and, and their big kid parents having a lot of fun. So thank you very much to Recreation and the DPW and everyone else who put that together. I attended a, an event against gun violence that was held at the Town Common a couple of weekends ago. It was very powerful and very peaceful, was organized by a number of youth members of the community. And really appreciate them coming forward to, to speak their minds on an important issue like that. Scott did mention some of the emails that we've been getting, we received, at least I received a little bit more than 40 emails since our last meeting. Topics such as ARPA funding, traffic, mosquito spraying, White Cliffs, location of town elections, location of Board of Selectment meetings and some questions and comments about the committee appointment process. As we have all mentioned and can't mention enough, we have a very important meeting coming up Thursday evening at 6:30 at the high school library and over Zoom for gathering input for ARPA funding. As has been mentioned before, we have well more than $4 million available to us and we wanted to put it to the best use possible. We've received a number of emails thus far, please keep them coming. I will also add that maybe people should think small in addition to big. We're getting a lot of requests and suggestions for some big ticket items, which is great and we have the money, hopefully to be able to at least do some of them. But we can also do a lot of good with some smaller ticket items. So if members of the public have suggestions or thoughts on some, some things we can do inexpensively as well, please send them my email, come to our meeting, visit our Zoom, whatever you would like on Thursday. Thank you. And the Northborough Art Guild held a great art show at the Historical Society over the weekend, which I attended. Some fantastic talent in town, great painters and other artists exhibited their works, some for sale, some not. And they are also looking for members, so if you are a painter of the creative variety, look up the Northborough Art Guild and it's a, a great group judging by their works. I am not a painter in the artistic variety, so I can't say anything more about that. And lastly, tomorrow is Flag Day, so happy Flag Day, everybody. That ends the reports. We've already done the reappointment of special police officers, so we'll move on to the recommendations for appointments to the Scholarship Committee, Council on Aging and Library Board of Trustees. Members of the interview committee, do you have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start with Council on Aging. And I move that the board vote to appoint Fran Backstrom to the Council on Aging for a three-year term as recommended by us.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Jason. Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm sorry, any other discussion before we vote? Okay, oh, yes, screwed up my vote.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that there are two spots open on the Council on Aging and we have this one very, very qualified applicant. So I think that's important information to have if you, if you don't have to happen to have it on the tip of your tongue. We can do that before each, each committee so that people understand what the situation is.
Really, yeah, thank you, Kristen. All right, Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason? Jason? I'm Mitch Cohen. Vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, Fran. Next, is there a motion on library trustees?
Yes. So should I make the motion and then make the comment about how many, that kind of thing? Okay. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Jocelyn McElhenney to the Board of Library Trustees for a two-year term. As recommended by the interview committee.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Scott. Is there a comment, Kristen?
Yes, there is a comment. We have two very qualified, really pretty amazing candidates. And we have, oh, I think it's four spots on that. Am I right about that? Four? We have plenty anyway for these two. And Jocelyn has been on the Library Trustees. Before for a while and just basically took a break during COVID and would like to be part of it again. And she was an extremely qualified candidate. And then. Bethany is new. She's our second one that we're going to move to a point. But she's newer, but she was equally interesting and library related. She works at the Antiquarian Society in Worcester, which is pretty interesting. So anyway. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Scott, how do you vote? Jason? Kristen? Julianne? I'm Mitch Cohen. Vote I. Vote is unanimous in flavor, in favor. Congratulations and thank you, Jocelyn. Is there a motion on the other library trustee appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Bethany Somis to the Board of Library Trustees for a three-year term. As recommended by the interview committee.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Any comments or questions? Okay. Julianne, how do you vote? Jason, how do you vote? Scott? Kristen? I'm Mitch Cohen. Vote I. Congratulations and thank you, Bethany. All right, we're getting there. Is there? For the Scholarship Committee?
Sorry, yeah, that's me. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Chandra Vora to the Scholarship Committee. For a two-year term as recommended by the interview committee.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion or comments? If none, Kristen, how do you vote? Julianne? Jason? I'm Mitch Cohen. Vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, Chandra. And thank you. And one more for the Scholarship Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Christina Ranzulo to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term. As recommended by the interview committee.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Any other discussions or comments? Julianne?
Yeah, I just want to say for all of these candidates that, that we are so, so. Thankful to have them come forward with their expertise and their experience and their enthusiasm. And it's, you know, for all of them, I think that both Kristen and I were very impressed with their, with their applications. And just thanks, thanks for applying. And I think that there's a big talent pool in Northboro, so keep the applications coming, please.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Jason, how do you vote? Scott? Kristen? Julianne? I'm Mitch Cohen. Vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations and thank you, Christina. Thus ends our appointments. And next up, we've got the FY 2022 NEDP Memorandum of Understanding. John, do you want to walk us through this one?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So as most of you are aware, the Northboro Extended Day Program has been, has had some kind of affiliation with the town. We've had an agreement in place for well over three decades. Years ago, NEDP actually was part of Family Youth Services. But that had been spun off probably bound 2007, 2008. In any event, NEDP is a private nonprofit, long affiliation with the town. We've had an agreement where we have essentially rented them space in the town hall. And we have some shared administrative staff with Family Youth Services that's been in place. And as a compensation for that, they do provide, in this case here, I'm recommending a three and a half percent. Increase in the fee that they pay Northboro. So in fiscal 2023, it would be $26,650. So again, it's just a, an arrangement that's been in place that allows them to physically reside in our building. Where they used to be part of Family Services. They're still in that office suite. Although Family Services doesn't provide any services to them anymore. So this is a contract, an annual contract agreement. That is approved by the board and generally the board will approve this and approve me to execute it for the upcoming fiscal year. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
I do see that the president of NEDP has already signed this, so it seems like they are in favor of this. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. John, just a, a quick check, and I think I asked the same question last year. No, no change to any of the other terms. It's just a change with the fee, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the fiscal year 2023 Annual Memorandum of Understanding between the town of Northboro. Between the town and Northboro Extended Day Program, Inc. for the use of office space and facilities at the town hall. And to authorize town administrator to execute the same.
Okay, motion made by Scott, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussions or comments? Julianne, how do you vote? Scott? I'm Mitch Cohen. Vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, John, for organizing that yet again. Pardon me as I scroll up to my agenda again. Okay, next up, we've got discussion of town administrator review and goals. So John and I had a discussion about this item. About a week ago as we were planning this agenda. And he reminded me that his contract renews every three years. So this is an opportune time to get back to doing the review, which I know is done many years, but not every year. That's an important part, a very important role of a Board of Selectmen and very important for strengthening the relationship between the board. And its administrator. And I'm also recommending that the board consider setting goals, not for John, but with John. It's also a very important part of, a very important role of Boards of Selectmen. Most Boards of Selectmen do that on an annual basis with their administrator. It provides the outlines for some high priority items on the part of the board. And provides the opportunity for discussion on those items throughout the year, sometimes quarterly or so. To get an update on those items and provide some of the basis for the review at the end of the year. So they are two intertwined items. John has put together some excellent information in the packet, which I'm sure you've all seen. On some possible goals for next year as well as the review process. The review process has already been agreed to in the past. So I'm not suggesting any, any changes. It might be something that we might take a look at sometime during the year and again with John. To, you know, to go ahead and, and if we want to update that form for next year and think about whether this or some other time is the right timing for that. But for now, this is, this is what we've got and it makes sense to, to go ahead with it. I'll make one slight request relative to, to what was in John's memo. And I did discuss this before the meeting with John. Which is that instead of having sort of the, the due date and completion of the reviews being the July meeting. If everyone is okay with getting them done a little sooner, I'd rather have them done on the 27th of June. So that we can complete that process before the end of the fiscal year and in the end of the, the current term of the contract. I think that's the. The right way to do it. I'm happy to entertain any feedback and of course, we'll, we'll do everything on part of the board. The last thing I'll mention is that there's certainly a question as, as whether, whether me as not being a member for the year under review. Whether I should participate in that review. John and I discussed that to some extent. I don't think we reached a final conclusion on that. But I'm going to leave that one up to John.
I told him I'd like to see his review first and then we can decide whether or not to include it. To, to the chair, if I may just add one thing, we also had a, we had a long conversation with regard to, to goal setting. Just, I just want to maybe plant the seed here tonight. One of the things that we talked about is. Under, you know, we participate in the Government Finance Officers Association's best practices. And one of the things that they did, they did it at the wrong time, but they overhauled their criteria, which they evaluate. The, the town's budgeting process and the, in the finished budget documents. And, but they did it during the, during the pandemic. And so a lot of municipalities that participate in that program. Were saying it was just not a good time. But one of the big focuses, it's a good thing. One of the big changes that they made in terms of the criteria and the focus. Is on strategic planning and goal setting. And so one of the things, if you look in the documents that I provided you for your packet. I list all the things, accomplishments, set some goals and identify a couple of, you know, potential goals that we would. Probably be worthwhile talking about. But one of those was having a third party come in and help us. Maybe do a more expanded strategic goal planning session. It can be as, as simple or as elaborate essentially as the board would like. But I think sometimes it's helpful to frame these types of things up, have a little bit more of a robust. Process. There's a chance to provide for your public input. I wouldn't say it's as expansive as say the Master Plan Implementation Committee. But it's more than just me providing you with goals or just board members coming up with their goals. It's a little bit. A little bit more involved process. And I just think it would be a good process for us. It'll inform the, the budget process a little bit more and allow us to make sure that what we're tracking and reporting on. Are in fact, you know, the strategic goals that we as a group, as in, as a organization have some sort of concurrence on. So we have the master plan and the Master Plan Implementation Committee's work that informs a, a good chunk of that. You have my, you know, goals that come up through staff and the, and the departments through the budget process. And then there are goals of the board members as well as a, as a body. And so what we try to do is bring all of that together and make sure that we're all on the same page. And, and then start providing through the budgeting process and reporting back. Reports on, on progress towards those agreed upon goals. So it's a little bit more of a, of a process. But I think something might worth talking about. We need to do a more robust process. One of the benefits, I should step back, of participating in the, in the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award is that they're constantly modifying. The best practices and enhancing them in order to consistently receive this award, which very few communities do. You have to, it's, it's a, it's a continuous improvement. This was probably, no, not probably. This was the biggest overhaul that they have done in over a decade. Like I said, the timing wasn't very good because it came out during the pandemic when most folks were distracted. So they've extended a lot of this type of thing. But the biggest piece of it, I think that would impact Northboro is again, just having a more. Formal strategic planning process that would fold into the, into the formal budget process. So it's just something I would appreciate maybe having a longer discussion with, with the board on. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me chime in on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, of course. John described that process to me of the GFOA Strategic Plan Process, which certainly makes sense to me as a goal. And I, one of the things I like about it is that it will then create some things that may become goals in future years. As, as we adapt to the output of a strategic plan. That makes, anything like that makes sense every decade or so to do. I look at, at goals as being things that are outside of the normal annual process. So I personally, I wouldn't set things like collective bargaining as a goal. It's certainly a critical job and a thankless job for the town administrator to, to do that. But in the packet John included, I think there are eight or 10 potential goals in there. I think if all of the others make a, make a lot of sense as possibilities. I think eight or 10 goals is way too many. I did ask a contact at the MMA if they had any input or formal process or recommendations on setting goals. They sent me a link to a webinar from a couple of years ago. I have not watched it yet, but I'll forward that link out to the whole board. And if anyone wants to watch it before next meeting, I think what I'd like to do is, is take, you know, the next couple of minutes. Just to gather any general thoughts on the part of the board members. If you're in agreement about the, the timeline for the review that I outlined or the goal setting process. And again, the goal setting process, we're not setting them tonight. We might set them next meeting. We might set them the, the meeting after that. Not something we should rush through, but I don't want to take too, too long about it. So I'll open it up to any comments or questions and suggestions. Boy, all sorts of hands. Julianne?
Well, to the, to the timeline, it seems like the evaluation has to be done sooner rather than later. So I think that for the next meeting to get that done would be beneficial. The goals, I, I, I'd like some. Some lengthy discussions about those because, because there are goals too, you know, with, and. And I think that, that I, I'd like to make sure that we give it the due diligence that it deserves. So to put it off till, until the July meeting might be beneficial.
So your suggestion, we not, not talk about the goal process and the goal setting at the June meet, the later June meeting? Or discuss it a little bit, but not anticipate setting them then?
Yeah, I think, I think this is probably something that is going to take a few meetings as we hear ideas, research, process. Yeah, that's, I, that's my gut feeling right now. Yeah. But I'm willing to hear from the others what they think.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. I saw your hand up next, I believe.
Yeah, thanks, Mitch. So if I could complete the evaluations before our next meeting on the 27th, correct, right? And then in terms of meeting the timeframes that we would have to. If we were to make a decision not to renew the contract, is that something we need to decide tonight? And, and have a motion on taking no action so that the renewal occurs? Is that up for debate at all?
I think we would have to decide that simply before June 30th. So June 27th would be the final date where we could. Make a decision. John, is that consistent with your understanding?
Yeah, just the way the contract is structured is you would need to notify me by the start of the next contract cycle. Which would be July 1st if you were not going to renew the contract. If you take, so if you take no action, then we would proceed. And I hope that you take no action and you continue to want my services. I'm certainly interested in continuing to serve the community.
Okay, thank you. And, and by asking the question, you know, not, not in any way saying that, that I just want to be. Clear with, with the board that we have, if there was action that someone wanted, it would need to be taken beforehand. But. John, you have my full, full support on that renewal. So that's not. Just, it was more of a technical question than, than a timing question. And then, yeah, I think, I think taking a bit of time to talk about the process of goal setting and then setting some goals. You know, makes sense and, and to fit that or, or to conduct those discussions over the next few meetings makes sense to me as well.
Thank you. Kristen, I think I saw your hand up before I saw Jason's minute ago. Is that correct?
Well, I just wanted to say I have a, quite a wealth of experience with reviewing town administrators. Jodely kidding. I really, I've only been on the board for a year and I've. I've never been that sort of person who reviews other people. So any tips and tricks and wisdom that any of you can share? Jason, I guess you've been on the board the longest. And Mitch, I know you were on other boards. So if people have any. And Mitch, I know you were on other boards, so if um people have any um. Just ideas they want to share with me, I'm I'm just happy to. Listen in and make sure that I um do the best that I can do.
The uh webinar link that I'll send out um goes through reviews angle as well as goal setting. Um, I haven't watched it, as I said, but that's what they said it did, so I trust them.
Yeah, that will be really helpful too.
Insight, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll definitely watch that, but also anything anybody else wanted to share. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jason, I saw your hand go up a second ago.
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess first uh to respond to Kristen's inquiry um uh. Part, sometimes the issue is not feeling you have enough information or enough direct observation to. Evaluate a particular item on the evaluation form. And in that case, there is an opportunity to. Indicate that essentially where you choose not to submit a rating for that particular item. So there's some. Flexibility for you to select the items that you think you have sufficient information um to to make a. Uh, a meaningful rating uh for that particular item. Uh, and then the second thing I was going to say, Mitch, I I do like the idea, I think of uh fewer goals rather than more goals. Um, and then the only thing I would say in addition to that, you mentioned that the. Uh, the typical or uh routine items uh typically would not be called out as goals because they're part of the expected. Annual and recurring kinds of things.
I would say that's my ex, that's my experience and my understanding how most towns do it, but I have seen it done a number of ways.
Yeah, and and I mean fundamentally, I think one of our goals in in Northborough has been uh to, you know, manage the budget process. Within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half. So um and manage to do that year after year. And I I certainly consider that um a very high priority, even if it is considered to be part of the regular budgeting process. And not called out as a specific goal. The other thing I would say is that um what we might. Choose as goals at the outset uh would need to be subject to change uh. Because we can't predict what circumstances such as a pandemic might arise and. Uh detract, you know, from the achievement of those goals and and required resources, time and effort to be diverted to other matters. Um, and so just uh to be mindful that it might be, uh you know, we certainly want to set. Goals that we believe um uh are priorities and are achievable. Um, and I think we also need to be mindful that it's a bit of a dynamic process, not a static one. And uh there may be circumstances that arise that would require us to revise um our expectations over the course of a of a year.
Agreed. Thank you, Jason. Any other comments or questions? Julianne?
So at this point, um, we're going to use the the evaluation tool that we've used for, I guess, many years. Um, my request would be that uh when we have more time that we look at that tool and. Have a discussion about how how um appropriate it is in in. In our town and given the information that we have. So because I I think it's um, I've made this comment before. I think it's um. I I had some difficulty with it just because I had no access to some of the information and I'd like. I'd like us to have a good discussion about the tool. So if you wouldn't mind doing that in the future, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense that uh that after we set the goals, that we then have a discussion uh planning for next year's review. Um, and as part of that, uh working with John on any updates to that, it is critical that the administrator. Um, be supportive of any changes made to the process. That's part of working together on this. Um, it would, you know, probably need to be updated to then include the goals that are being set. Um, and I know there are, there are some sort of staffing related comments that are that are within the review form. That might not be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to do because we don't, we don't get ourselves formally involved. In some of those processes, but we can have those those discussions later. I agree. Um, any other comments or questions before we plan next steps? Um, so for the review, if everyone could email just me, um, your completed review form. Um, by, I'd say close of business next Monday. And then I will consolidate that and and prepare it for the packet for our meeting on the twenty seventh. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Okay, just do me a favor. Make sure you you don't copy other board members on that. And um, and we'll, I'll put that together for the next meeting. And I would say that I'll put goals, just further discussion of goals onto the next agenda and and have that continuing for a couple of meetings. So uh if you could come prepared for the next meeting with um with one or more goal suggestions. Um, and they could absolutely be inclusive of uh from John's list. Um, from my perspective, ideally between three and five is probably a a good target number. Um, I've seen as many as ten and it was a horrible process. I don't want to go there. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Okay, very good. There's no vote needed on that item. So pardon me as I scroll back up to the top. Hey, you get to hear me talk a little bit more. So um some discussion on agenda format. Um, and a couple of other things. So um I included a memo in the packet outlining that, you know. Moving public comment to the top and the bottom of the agenda, that's uh stealing that from our school committee. Um, and I don't know whether the school, our school committee stole that from the Northborough Board of Selectmen or the Southborough Board of Selectmen. Or if the Southborough Board of Selectmen stole that from one of the school committees. Apparently, all all three of the school committees involved. In Northborough and Southborough use that format, and I think that makes some sense. Um, I wanted to present the board with another idea that I have seen used successfully, but it is a change from um a bigger change. From how we've done that, which is more of a kind of a context aware or context sensitive comment system. Some may call that a comment anywhere, a public comment anywhere system. It's not quite that. Um, what it would do is that the public comment at the top of the agenda would be for the public to comment on anything that is not. On the agenda. The appropriate time for public comment on an agenda item would be during that agenda item. Um, and it's not just anyone just sort of yelling out from their seat, assuming that we ever have real seats in a real meeting again. Um, but uh the board's just, it is a still a Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, and what this does is after the board has concluded with this discussion, but before any votes take place. The public would be an oper, be given the opportunity to comment upon um that uh that agenda item. Before a vote takes place. The advantage that I've seen with a system like that is that the uh the public is then aware of all of the discussion and the presentation and the notes. And generally offers comments that is that is more context appropriate. That is with the understanding of the discussion and the information that has just been presented as opposed to. Um, at the very beginning of a meeting before anything takes place or after the discussion is already over and the vote is concluded. Um, I I find it a process that works well. I have never had to deal with that over Zoom, so I don't know if that would add any wrinkles or complexities. To it. Um, but I am very eager to hear what the board hears about that idea and um I'm happy to. To go whichever way the board prefers on that. So I'm open to comments and thoughts. Scott?
Yeah, thanks, Mitch. I guess a question if we have the opportunity for public comments at the very beginning. And then the opportunity for context specific comments throughout. Is there still a need for the closing comments at the end of the meeting?
Probably not. I mean, we we could have it in case anyone joined late and had some suggestion for a future agenda item or something came up during the meeting. It's not, it it's in the situation where I've used the context sensitive, there was no public comment at the end. And and I don't, if we dropped that out as part of this kind of a change, I don't think we'd be losing it very much.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Any other comments? Oh, Jason, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so a couple of questions, um. If we're taking comments on essentially any, or let me ask it this way, are there any agenda items for which we would not be taking public comment?
I can't think of any, and I think it would be inappropriate to say we won't take comments on on something. Just like we wouldn't take, for example, we wouldn't take comments on something during regular public comments as we have now.
And uh the agenda would have to give notice that public comment will be accepted for any item on the agenda.
We could include that on the agenda if.
I think you would have to because it's essentially rendering every agenda item as a de facto public hearing, uh although. As you point out, well, it's de facto public hearing.
Yeah, it's a very similar process.
Whatever, but yeah, I'll take public comment before proceeding to a vote. Um, is it the case that? In that circumstance, the comments will be offered, but that the board. Will or will not deliberate further uh before voting?
I think I think it would be good for the board to take public input into account. So if there was comment given that any board member felt that they wanted to discuss further, then absolutely do that.
Okay. I guess I would just like to be clear on the agenda, on the posted agenda, that people have an opportunity to comment on. Any agenda item uh so that they're aware of that. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, any other comments, suggestions? Uh, Julianne?
I think I think this is a system that um is very worthwhile um instituting. It will give people an opportunity to to make their comments while we're deciding. And and honestly, people in town have great ideas and sometimes it comes after the fact. So I'd love to see, I'd love to see this happen.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are we generally supportive of giving this a try? We can try it for a meeting or two. And if we don't like it, we change it back. And I'm seeing a lot of nodding and guessing, yes, and thumbs up. So, all right, so that's what we'll do for our next meeting. And I'll work with John on the proper way to um to notify uh the public as part of the agenda. To make that clear. I I'm sorry, John, I didn't ask if you had any any comments or questions. I know you and I have talked about this already.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, we'll implement it.
Okay. Very good. And then the other item uh that I wanted to bring up is the opportunity uh or the thought of posting the full agenda packet. On the town website at approximately the same time that it is emailed out to us, which is usually on the Friday prior to the meeting. Um, I know it was a couple of years, two or three years ago, that the board started to. Post the packets on the same day of the meeting, which was a great improvement over not posting it at all. Um, allowed allows the public to uh to follow along. Um, but given the weekend gap, sometimes it's hard for the public to go ahead and and study up the way that people want to. If something is posted during the during the business day on Monday and they see it just prior to a meeting. Um, there was some reluctance, I know, on the part of some board members at the time of um. You know, what happens if a board, if a member of the public calls me, meaning a, you know, any particular board member and has a question before I've had a chance to. To read into it and how to deal with that. So the decision was made at that point to uh to post the packets uh the same day of the meeting. Um, I think it's worthwhile to um to pull that back and say, you know, when we get an agenda packet, it's public. Um, and and I certainly think it's a good idea to post them online again approximately the same time. It's a different process if if uh John and Becca and I want to email them out to us and then post them, it's obviously not going to be the same minute. That the public sees it, but it's going to be shortly thereafter. Um, so I I wanted to see what the board members thought about that. Before we implement any change. Jason?
Uh, yeah, uh, that's fine. Um, the only thing I would say is that there are occasions where the information being gathered. To construct the packet um is delayed beyond the typical Friday noon deadline. And so in that case, we typically receive it late and I want the public to have the right expectation that uh they'll have it. As soon as or very shortly after we have it, but it won't necessarily be. Uh, at a time that's convenient to them if it is delayed into, say, Saturday or something because certain information is still being added.
Very reasonable, Kristen.
Um, yeah, so what um, sometimes we get um. Executive session stuff in the same PDF, so obviously that would be two separate packets then, right?
That would be my, the way that I think it would be best handled is to create a public packet and an executive session packet. Um, for for both us and for obviously for the public, they wouldn't get the executive session materials. But I think it's it's cleanest if they are separate. That way there's no risk of accidentally doing something with it. If it gets emailed to us and then six months later, we accidentally forwarded out to somebody else without realizing that there's executive session material. That would be bad. I think it's best for that, e- even if we don't make this change, honestly, I think it's a good idea to separate the two.
Yeah, that would be my main concern. Um. Uh, having to maybe even two whole separate emails, like executive session packet and um meeting packets. Yeah, that would be great. Um, and I can't really think of a, I mean, in my vast experience on the board. Um, I can't really think of a time when. Someone else having the information in the packet before me would be a big problem. I would just say I haven't read it yet. So I think I think it should be fine.
Any other comments? Julianne?
Well, well, I I think we've all gotten some positive feedback about having the packet available to the public. And it, but with the concern that especially, you know, a lot of people work on Monday all day. So this this makes perfect sense and I'm glad you brought it up. Thanks.
Julianne, any other questions or comments? Scott, I saw you go off mute, but I didn't see your hand, so I don't know if you have any.
I was tempted whether to say, yeah, I concur or just, yeah, or we have consensus.
Okay, that's good. So I think I see consensus on the board to go forward with this. John, you and I have talked about this. And again, you you seem to correct me if I'm wrong, the uh that the office would be able to handle this.
Yeah, just with the caveat that it it'll go out when it goes out. Uh, sometimes, a lot of times we're waiting on, you know, final background checks. On applicants for things or something from council, just, you know, um, but generally the packets are wrapped up. It's unusual for them not to be wrapped up by late Friday night, but like this past Friday was a perfect example. I was here at eight o'clock getting it wrapped up for you. So uh that's when it went out, that's when it would get posted. That's acceptable. We can make that work.
Works fine for me. Is that good with everybody? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, John.
Yep.
Okay, um, I had nothing else on that item. Um, cemetery deeds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one one four nine and one one five zero.
Second.
Motion made by Jason and I think seconded by Kristen, I'll get it too. Um. Any other discussion? All right, uh, Jason, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Okay, I vote aye. Sorry, um, vote is unanimous in favor. Uh, cemetery deeds are granted. Um, are executed and I don't think we had anything else. Anybody else have any other business before we ask for our final public comment? Julianne?
Well, I just want to once again um ask the the folks out there to please. Submit your ideas for ARPA, come to the meeting, join the meeting or email us. Because we um, we'd really like to hear from you.
Thank you, Julianne. Anybody have anything else? Are there any members of the public that would like to offer comment at this time? So raise your virtual hand. Going once, going twice. I don't see any hands raised. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Jason to adjourn the meeting. Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. The meeting is adjourned.